Just so that we have that available for anybody. So we're just kind of kicking off here for those that join us with the recording that just started. Just kicking off, we're meeting with Lamar Advertising again to just get an update on where things kind of stand as we're talking about the digital billboards. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jim, Bob and Michael and Jim, like if you don't know, if you want to take the lead, I'll share the screen as you're ready to do the presentation and as you kind of go through this and assuming that you'll probably want to do questions and answers maybe at the end after your presentations.
Yes, thanks Doug. Yeah, we, you know, we appreciate your time and I think look at the proposal and we have a meeting or a we call a presentation to hopefully answer a lot of questions that anyone can have and obviously at the end or even in, you know, while we're presenting, which Mike Green is going to do, just stop us and we will answer the questions and we can go from there. If that sound good?
One thing Doug, just because this is the PDF, it won't have the videos. If you go to the link that I had sent, it will, it'll open up online and then you'll have the videos that kind of help with the presentation.
We ask you to just speak up a little bit, little more, just so we can hear you.
Yeah, so if you just click, yeah, there you go. So the bottom right hand where the arrows flashing, you click that, there's like 24 slides. So please go one at a time, there you go. Click that should get it started for us. So just want to start off, say who we are with Lamar Advertising. We've been established in 1902. We've been serving Finger Lakes area proudly since 97. We have a lot of local partners, some of our current local partners, and we got Thompson Health, Ratchet Regional Health, Lake Shore Dentistry, Lynch Furniture, Canagwa, Canagwa National Bank, Canagwa Carpets and so forth. Just we do have a lot of local partners. Doug, go to the next slide. So the goal of this presentation is to educate you guys on digital billboards, how they interact with the community. You know, the next slide. So this is a gateway sign or a monument sign. These are just real life, actual examples of boards that we have put in other communities. Just, it's just showing that we are able to work with the municipalities and kind of we'll sit down with you guys and create something that looks aesthetically pleasing and blends in with the community. Just something that looks nice and you guys are happy and proud of to put in the community.
And Doug, we did have a different model in our last presentation. We were just, these are ideas and we're open minded. So please want to know that they're just say, it's more of what we call a monument sign than the regular monopole billboard on a monopole. So we'd have to sit down with somebody and kind of design based.
Yeah, this isn't to say that this is what it's going to look like. There's just examples of actual monument billboards. So go to the next slide. So the basics of digital billboards are simple. They are static messages shown once every 10 seconds. The instantaneous changes, there's no movement, there's no motion, there's no video. And they allow local businesses the ability to advertise on state of the art technologies. If you go to the next slide, it's kind of a video that's going to show you how they operate. Yep, there you go. So if you look in the bottom left hand corner, it's a timer. This is, this, for this video is eight seconds. We do 10 seconds 12 times. It just gives just an extra couple of seconds, just so there's not as many instantaneous changes. But it's a 10 second stat, static image. So you can kind of see, if I watch this video, hopefully it's a little boring to you because that's kind of what they are. They're just static billboards that under one second transition is instantaneous. This video will go on. Doug, if you want to go to the next video, it's an actual example of one of our billboards. So this billboard is located here in Rochester, it's on Metroport Road. Just kind of give you an example of this is, this is not a monument sign. This is just a monopole. But this is one that we've had up and as you can see, just it changes instantly. It's not, no flashing, no scrolling, no movement. Just static images. So essentially just the static billboard that every 10 seconds instantly changes.
I'm going to add something. Traveling at about 45 miles per hour, you think they can see two messages. So there would probably be one change in that what we call a new zone. Or in, so if you're driving 45 miles, probably you probably see two messages. And this is actually an example of a board that we're posting for the five and 20 location. It's the same size, same height from above ground.
Yeah, so the five and 20 near Big Lots, this is essentially exactly what it would look like. So this is just a picture of a photo cell. So these come standard on all of our digital billboards. This is, this is what allows us to control the brightness 24 hours a day. It kind of operates like an iPhone brightness, to give you an example. It just, it adjusts to the ambient light outside. So you know, you walk outside in your iPhone, if it's bright, it turns up so you can see it. If it's dark, it dims down. So it's easy to see. It just allows us to make sure that it's not too bright, it's not too dull. It's just always the right amount of, because of the right amount. Then the maximum brightness on this during the day is 5,000 Ken Della per meter squared. At night is 280 Ken Dollar per meter squared. Those are just the New York State DOT regulations. So we stay within that.
In a more, in a layman's term for the, for the brightness, we, we don't like bright billboards. We're not looking to blind anybody. We also can control the, the brightness of the boards manually from, from our, what we call our network operations center. And if you look, if you think about a scale from one to 100, the brightness that during the day is probably like a 90 and the brightness at nighttime is probably about a four. So depending on the ambient light in the area, if we could, we can vary it to take it to a three or a two or up to a, you know, five if we want to, whatever works best for the spot in the area.
If you want to go to the next slide Doug. So I know a lot of some people's concerns with digital billboard is just the safety of them. So here, this is just three traffic studies I have for you guys. They're all like 80 to 100 pages long and I do have the PDFs. I can send them to Doug if he wants to distribute them to you guys, but I just kind of pulled the summaries, we'll go through them quick. If you want to hit the arrow button Doug. So this is the foundation for outdoor advertising, research and education. And just some of the key findings is that the number of rate of vehicle accidents does not increase after the installation. And accidents occur with or without billboards, digital or conventional, they don't really make a difference. I'll go to the next one. This is the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and the outcome from the studies was that digital billboards are not linked to accidents. If you want to go to the next one Doug. And then finally, we have the US Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration. And their conclusion was that digital billboard does not affect drivers' glance. So when people see these boards, they treat them as static billboards, as kind of they are. The, the digital does not make them glance longer or keep their eyes off the road. So again, those are just some safety studies. I know it's a concern to some people. So that's three of them from some of the biggest departments, transportation administrations. And again, I have the, the full, the full articles. If you guys are interested, I can send them over. So.
And another thing is that before we move forward, we need to get preliminary approval from the New York State Department of Transportation. And then if you get a permit, a local permit, we, we have to get secondary approval from the New York State Department of Transportation Safety. So let's take a look at it. So it will be, it will be out of the New York State DOT regulations as well.
To move on kind of towards the ordinance and code section, some potential amendments to the code. And we'll go through these. These are all made to kind of protect the town against basically in a way to allow Lamar to erect it and change out some of these stacks into digitals and to keep any other Johnny advertising company out. So.
This might be, this might be a good chance just to pause here for a quick second. So what we would end up having you guys do, and we kind of talked about this and just so everyone's aware, so they would work with the planning board, obviously to get site plan approval like we would normally do for signage. And then obviously the town board relative to an amendment to the existing town code. So there would kind of be two different groups, two different things kind of going on. We might be able to have some of it overlap and simultaneously, but the, just so everybody's aware, they would go through the normal process with the planning board also.
Okay.
If you'd want us to take any questions about that before we move on to kind of the code and ordinance section about the design or operation of the digitals.
Does anybody have any questions so far about the operation of it before we talk about some of the code, that sort of stuff?
I was curious as to do you monitor, I mean, can you monitor from your location, what's going on at these, you know, various sites where these signs are located?
Yes, we can. We can monitor it locally. We have, there's a camera on them. So we can see what's up on them 24/7. There's also a network operations center down at our headquarters in Baton Rouge where people's job is just 24/7, eyes on these things, monitor to make sure everything is good.
Okay.
I don't have an operation. I'm sorry. Go ahead Terry.
No, 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 go ahead Ken.
I don't have an operational question, but I have a question tied to the safety issue. My question is, do you provide indemnification to the town?
Um, in terms of like, where the billboards are, yeah, like if some, if, for example, if who's again, was to climb on one of these things and jump off and break an ankle, like that sort of thing?
Any type of indemnification. If someone were, I understand the studies, but if someone was driving down the road and said that the sign distracted them and caused an accident, is the town indemnified from Lamar for that?
You cannot. I know we do identify the property owner in regards to situations like that, normally they approach the property owner. So we are covered in that respect. We can name you folks as additional insured if that comes up. So an answer to your question, yes. Yeah, we'll bear responsibility.
And I think you can check with the attorney Doug, but I think that should be a primary insured rather than an additional insured FYI.
Sure, we definitely, great question John. We definitely make a note on that. He mentioned there, but just so everybody's aware, I don't know that we've mentioned this to everyone. These would be placed on private property, even though that we would be working with Lamar, obviously. This, this does involve private landowners that they already have agreements with that are in the town of Canada.
That's good. Thank you.
I have two questions. One is, you mentioned in your very first slide, partners, local partners, one being Thompson Hospital and another being CNB. What is the relationship there? What is the partnership? Does that just mean that you have a billboard on some of the property that they own or what other, how else do you function in that partnership?
Can't hear. No.
Yeah, I think we're getting actually Joyce, I muted you because I think I was getting a little bit of feedback from you. Jim, if you could just start over, please.
Sure. We consider the partnership when we have a relationship with our clients and they are currently using our billboards for marketing purposes. And also the CNB, Canagwa National Bank owns the, he's laying that work man.
I didn't understand one word.
Jim, Jim, it is a little bit hard. Maybe, I don't know if you can maybe even try to get a little closer to the microphone. It's, we're just a little bit.
Yeah, yeah. So CNB, let me, I'll try to be louder for you guys. CNB and Thompson Health, they're, they advertise with us and they, they use their force to market with us. So we consider our advertisers our partners in business.
Okay.
And Canagwa National Bank also owns the property, the parcel of land on Route 332 where we're looking at a potential law gateway monument sign.
Okay. The other question I have for you is according to one of your later slides, the FHA indicated that I couldn't read what it is there, but I'm just kind of paraphrasing what I heard, is that there's no safety issues because drivers keep their eyes on the road. If drivers are keeping their eyes on the road, what benefit, what advertising benefit is there to a sign that keeps changing all the time? I mean, you know, you have to, if you're keeping your eyes on the road, you perhaps give a few seconds up to glance at the billboard. But basically, you know, because of safety reasons or whatever, your eyes are on the road. So what do you, how do you respond to that?
I'm not exactly sure what terminology you might use or phrasing, but yeah, traditionally a glance at a billboard is between two and three seconds. And it's, it's kind of like anything else on the side of the road. If you're looking at a building, a water tank or something of that nature. Now, if I were to say to somebody, okay, you guys tell me what's on all, all four, one, two, all four billboards in the town of Canagwa, you might not, you might not know, you know what I mean? And I, I look at it like when I'm looking for a cell phone, I notice a lot of cell phone advertising on the TV and in the newspaper and whatnot. So people do that, that look at billboards, that's where in that business. And why do we have a changing sign? Is the changing sign is one is we have more advertisers on it. It's a short answer. But secondly, certain advertisers can utilize the, the digital billboard within their slot for, let's, let's take McDonald's for example. They can advertise breakfast, lunch and dinner, not just a generic one message or not have a breakfast message when people are going, driving home from work at night. So you know, that's what the, the, we changed that for. Also, the, the digital billboards allow us to put up certain, certain things like amber alerts or emergency alerts, weather alerts, like, you know, snow or something like that. So there's, there's many benefits to the, the usage of the, the digital signs and, you know, that answer the question?
Yes, thank you. I, I do have one other question though. This is supposed to be a, I'm with the Gateway Signage Committee. And our main purpose is to introduce, you know, motorists to the town of Canagwa as they enter into a, to at least the uptown area where this sign is going to be. And so I'm wondering if this billboard on the, the representation that you've made regarding this, you call it a monument sign, but I didn't see anything that says there, town of Canagwa welcomes you or something like that. Is that all possible? Can we have, can the town of Canagwa have a, you know, a shot that says every, you know, so many seconds, welcome to the town of Canagwa? So people that actually know what they're, where, that they're approaching the town, a business district. Is that possible? Or does that a, another kind of relationship that the town would have with you?
Part, we have a, an arrangement where the town would receive a certain amount of slots on all the digital billboards. But I guess the real answer to the question is, in our initial proposal on the monument sign, we actually had a, a permanent sign that said, welcome to the town of Canagwa with the logo. And so perhaps Joyce, we can show you that. Or send it over to Doug and Doug can forward it to you, what it looked like. But there was a part of the, of what we call a monument sign. And what a monument sign to us means, it's just not on a monopole. And it's, it's, it's to be determined. We don't know. There's not a standard because everybody's standards are different of what they're looking to do. But the answer to your question, yes, we could, we were, part of the plan was to put a welcome to the town of Canagwa.
And then also could the town of Canagwa have a, a slot, you know, a time period where we could advertise something that we want to advertise in our own community, community announcements, you know, this kind of thing?
Yes, the answer to your question is yes. Doug just pulled up a some information I sent them today about what we had, like a kind of a share with the town of Canagwa. And what it says is, if I, if you want me to go right through it, again, this is kind of a fun, we have this arrangement with other towns. And we're, we're pretty fluid and we're, we're open minded. But it says for first five years, if you can tell there that the digital billboard goes up, the town of Canada will be granted 54 days of, on once, other slots on each of the billboards that go up. Traditionally, billboards are bought in 28 day increments. And I, in from a previous conversation, I understand that that's probably not what the, the town wants to do. So you can break that up into days or weeks, you know, three days, one week, if you like. The slots that are provided, traditionally, if you know there's an event coming on, we would like, we would even like it if at the beginning of the year, you tell us what time you want on the, on the boards, we can schedule them in. Because once the boards become sold, if you were to say, hey, I want to do something for next week and it's sold out, we, it would be sold out, you know what I mean? If there's six advertisers on it. Or there may be a location available. So if you have a plan or the town has a plan of the events, we could schedule it. We could schedule it two years in advance if you wanted to. And then traditionally, we, we have, we need a turnaround time of, of what the artwork should be. And if you give us the artwork in advance, we could schedule that as well. And but if you don't, if you don't have the artwork, we said that it would probably go to a, if you have, if you reserve the time, we would just have a default of like the town, of the town of Canagwa or some other message you may want. You know, on, on the sign, you know, we, we're, we are a for-profit organization. So we wouldn't be looking for you guys to pop local people and say, hey, you want to go on the sign and read whatever. We would like to stick to non-profit organizations, not for profit organizations. Municipal government or organizations like the fire department or the police department or festivals or parades and things of that nature. Again, events for the town of Canagwa, notifications for the town of Canagwa. And some of the non-permitting uses that we have as a company are, that we would want is nothing, no political advertising that you guys use because we have, we have political advertising, but we have certain regulations that we follow. Basically, everybody pays the same rate. There's no issue oriented advertising. We don't, we don't, we're really not keen on that as a company. And basically some of the stuff in here, we're saying that, you know, we have the right to deny creative, which we do for all our, our boards. And you know, something that's offensive or encourages illegal activity, which you guys probably wouldn't do, but disparaging to somebody or otherwise incapable with our values, we, we can, we have the right to reject that. As, as a company, Lamar does not advertise like sexually oriented book businesses. And you know, we like to, I, I, I think you guys get the idea. We're looking for more like town events and, and supporting things that the town does.
Thank you.
Does that answer the question? Yes, it's, it's
Yes, it does.
It's easier than it is on paper. Once we get the ball rolling, we have a very, we have a great relationship with everybody. If we have open slots and you want it, just call us up. We, you know, I mean, we, we like advertisers on the board. That's what we, we like that.
Thank you.
Jim, if I just could, so we do have a gateway team that would, would probably want to work with you folks. You had originally mocked up a concept that you guys had showed us, but um, and as you said, there was a specific, like a permanent thing on there that said, welcome. I don't remember if it said uptown Canagwa or if it said town of Canagwa or whatever, but we could figure all that out down the road, right? That's you're willing to work with us on all that.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, because somebody had mentioned in the beginning about changing it to a we had had conversations about the board being on Route 332, a one-sided sign or perhaps a two-sided sign. So if you have a two-sided sign, it switches that, that model of what the, what the billboard looked like, because it has, it will be different kind of supports. So that's why we're, it's hard for us to say what it would look like because we don't know what it is yet. You know, I mean, but again, we're, we're open minded to aesthetically pleasing and complimenting what the town Kenny was trying, trying to achieve in the uptown.
I think Bob has a question.
Yeah, I do. Thanks. I just, really two parts. Following up on what Joyce had asked, I'm, I'm still curious about the benefit to the town by doing that. That's my first question. My second one was the ramifications. As if we do this, what does that mean going forward? And the reason I ask that is from being on the ZBA and also ordinance, we've been trying to keep the brakes on. So many businesses that want to be bigger and bolder with their advertising. An example would be the, the car dealerships. And if we are expanding or going into another mode like this, I, I guess I'm curious what the ramifications are. But anyway, two-part question, benefit to the town and then, and then what comes after this, if this goes through?
Maybe the, maybe this might be a good time to go back through the ordinance, because I think Bob's question hits at the language and what that means for future. Maybe if you want to finish going through that and then we could come back and follow up on, on Bob's.
All right. Yeah, let's try to answer that with this next part Bob, and then we can circle back, make sure that we had answered your questions.
Terrific.
You want to take it over my, yeah.
All right. All right. So now we'll kind of get into the code ordinance portion like Doug was mentioning. So if you go back, just how we would define these signs, there's two different ways. You can define them just as a digital sign, as an off-site sign or billboard that utilizes digital or LEDs or similar electronic methods to create the changeable image display area. Another way is an electronically changing message sign, which is a sign or a portion thereof designed to accommodate frequent message changes, compromising characters and letters, and that can be changed or rearranged electronically without altering the face or surface of the sign. Go to the next one. So allowing digital signs, regulations, provisions. So digital signs and electronically changing message signs would be permitted as off-site signs, including pre-existing non-conforming off-premise billboards, maybe digital signs or electronic changeable message signs subject to the following provisions. So only if all these provisions are met can a sign become a digital sign. So if you want to go to the next one, it has all provisions. If you click the arrow again, it'll blow up that, that document. So the, it just has this, this stuff is mainly all the provisions from the New York State DOT. All the dwell time, the maximum brightness, no, no sequencing of messaging, no motion. The main things I want to point in your direction that we added in here are LM and N. So L says that exchange or conversion ratio of one to one, one square foot of conventional stack billboard to one square foot of digital billboard must be met in order to qualify for a digital sign or electronically changeable message sign. So no new digital sign or message sign shall be permitted without a one-to-one ratio or conversion or exchange. And then M says no off-site digital or electronically changeable message sign shall be permitted unless it is to replace a current pre-existing non-conforming sign. So with those provisions in place, we are trying to protect the town from any new company trying to come in and say, hey, there's a digital sign here. You let them do it, let us do it. Well, unfortunately for them, we're the only ones in town with pre-existing non-conforming billboard. So we'd be the only one able. we'd be the only one able to do this exchange. So these, these provisions to the code are essentially allowing us to do this without allowing any outside business to achieve the same. Go to the next, the next slide. Then that's just, that's the main L provision that just says get straight out. Then adding the provisions to the local code, the provisions of this ordinance would be included and incorporated into the code of ordinances for the town of Canandaigua and amended there, too. So that's essentially how they would be put into the code. And then some digital billboard locations. I know that I've heard from you guys before that you want to see what these look like. So there's five billboards that we have right now that are the same size. The two highlighted, you want to click the arrow, Doug, it'll blow it up a little bit. Do you look on the map, the nearest digital billboard locations? One is in Geneva slash Phelps, which is on Route 14, south of the thruway. The other one is in the town of Junius, which is just east of the Waterloo Outlet Mall. Both of those signs are 12 by 25 digital billboards. And if you want to go visit one of those sites, this is exactly what we were teaching you guys today, just essentially how they interact with the communities. And they'll give you probably a better understanding of exactly what they are. And then there's just the addresses to them.
Is this one visible from the thruway?
No.
No, okay.
No, it's just, it's on that Route 318 junction. If you were to go to the, the outlet mall, it's best, it's located at J Martin Auction Center, if any of you guys are familiar with the business. And then just the proximity to the Canandaigua locations. And that is, we have to, you guys, take more questions from you guys now.
You want to go back and touch on Bob's question? He was asking about the benefit to the town. And then, and then I don't know if Bob, if you felt like that answered the second part relative to, does it open us up? The intent is so that it doesn't, so.
We're getting closer.
Um, I mean, at the, you know, as far as the benefits, you can look at it in different ways. One is where, you know, if you use the word like uptown, and sounds a little bit more contemporary, I think that these boards are more contemporary. They're, they're cleaner, they're not the old angle iron that you currently see where it looks like an erectus set behind it. And also, the, the advertising is, you know, what we call more dynamic. The benefit, and obviously the benefit for the town is to get some advertising to be used.
Obviously, another benefit of this is reducing some, reducing the number of billboards. If we were to do this, it would have, we'd have less actual square footage, you know, going on five and 20 from two signs to one sign, and so forth.
Let me ask you a question related to that. So current advertisers on the billboards, I'm assuming that they basically get a 28-day flight. So it's essentially one advertiser. It is, is there a benefit to our organizations, let me put it that way, in the community that want to advertise? Does the, does the cost go down doing it this way? Or, you know, I don't want to get into too much of your particulars business model, but if you can help me, I'm just wondering, I'm assuming that it gives more availability for advertisers, but also wondering if there's a benefit to the organizations that might want to advertise?
The answer is yes and no. The advertisers that are currently on the board are the only advertiser on the board. So the price, when you look at the, the investment, it's, it's usually done by impressions or cars on the road. So if you take a static board, which is currently there for the digital billboard, your impressions go down. So the pricing, if you look at just in layman's terms, the pricing will also go down for a digital slot. But you're also, you know, you're, you're in a location with six other people. So it's based off impressions. And another way to look at it is what they call it, is like cost per thousands, is a method of doing it. But so the cost is, it's, it's, and it's also based on occupancy. If the, you know, we're kind of a commodity, if there, if it's full occupancy, then the rates kind of follow. Things start going lower. Doesn't also think that if you purchase boards for a long term, like for a year, it affects the rates as well. So it's all kind of, it's not cookie cutter. We try to, you know, we, we like new advertisers, we like people from local advertising. So we're, we're kind of, we kind of take everything as situational. That answer the question?
I have a question for the ordinance committee regarding definition of billboards. Will that also be included in the code? But also the distinction between billboards and the large signs that are available for little, you know, shopping malls, you know, along the road, they're pretty big signs. And will there be a distinction between that signage? And will it also be a digital, you know, surface also be available for those? Or are we talking about just digital for billboards?
So let me jump in on that for a quick second. So the, we're talking about, so you're Joyce, you're talking about multi-tenant signs?
Yes, I am.
Which, which is specifically spelled out in town code. So we're not talking about amending that section of the town code at all relative to multi-tenant signs.
And as of now.
Right. This would be just for these pre-existing, as, as he was spelling out in that, these pre-existing billboards that are there. And, and in terms of the specific language, the town attorney obviously will, will be really hammering that out before we present that to the ordinance committee. But, you know, the town attorney is working on that. Also, we're working collectively on that to get you something that hopefully is, is, you know, making sure that we've checked all the boxes, dotted the i's and crossed the t's to make sure that we're not opening it up.
Yeah, I, I would have a concern about that, that we have things or signage that looks like billboard signage, or is large enough for perhaps billboard signage on our multiple tenant sign. So that would be an issue, I think, to clarify.
Just that traditionally in code, the signs are either considered on-premise or off-premise. And Joyce, what you're talking about is traditionally labeled as on-premise signage, which has a different code initially than off-premise signage, which is the category of the billboard.
Thank you.
Another question, too. Let's go to Oksana, and then we'll come to you, Bob. How's that?
Thank you.
So Doug, as I understand that, this is, the code amendment is specific to Lamar?
Or it's specific to the four pre-existing billboards. It's specific to the four pre-existing billboards, too.
Okay, so that the language at the beginning where, where that slide is, is kind of open-ended. So I think, you know, Nadler will have to work on that.
Well, we'll, we'll work through, we'll certainly work through whatever we need to work through. But again, it has in the provisions, it specifically says that it has to, the only way it would be permitted is if it's replacing a pre-existing non-conforming billboard. And there's only four billboards in the town of Canandaigua. And then our agreement with Lamar is that one of, actually, two of those pre-existing billboards would go away, and it would leave two, essentially, of these new proposed billboards in the town of Canandaigua.
Okay, so it's a bit hard to read.
Right, yeah. I understand. But yes, that we'll make sure that that's in the, in the local law, in the language, in the draft language, that would not allow things to open up for another entity. This is just allows for replacement of a pre-existing non-conforming billboard. All right, Bob, I think you had
Yes, thanks. So if I'm, I'm digesting this, and I think I'm, I'm getting it, we're not talking about a huge addition of new signs, but rather a conversion from some signs that currently exist, converting them to, to this more contemporary, you know, usage. Okay, I get that. You, in the presentation, you fellows said that it's more than likely that we would see a reduction of signs as a result of this conversion. And I just, I need you to touch on that a little bit, because that would be a benefit to the town. I'm looking for benefits. If we could reduce, because you, you'd have to understand, with the ordinance committee, we are sort of like the dam in many cases, where everybody wants to advertise. And if their business isn't good, they'll blame it on not enough opportunity for signage. And we've been through all that. So what we're trying to do is keep the character of the town, not go overboard with signage. We've seen that in other, in other local communities. And is, I guess what I'm saying is, if you can deliver on that, that would make it, that would be a positive. So I guess I need you to react to that.
Okay, not going into the specifics of it, the, the plan is for a reduction in the number of billboards. And I, you know, we're kind of in discussion with, I guess, Nadler, and, and our attorney. And the proposal, and I'm not sure how far depth I go in, is to, is that removal of, of billboard faces. There'd be, there'd be less billboard faces than currently.
Okay. So it's not, it's not a sure thing, but that, but you're, you were moving in that you were hopefully moving in that direction, you're saying?
That's why we're speaking, yes.
Okay. Well, Jim, I think it's probably safe to say, right, so there's currently a billboard on New York State 21 that we've kind of collectively said that one would go away. So that's a complete elimination of that one. And then, a, and, and part of it is, and, and that's, you know, I really want to compliment Lamar, they've been very good to work with and very flexible, because I think part of it also depends on what the town wants. Like, for instance, that uptown sign, we've talked about, you know, is that one-sided or is that two-sided? Maybe the town as a benefit wants that to be two-sided for the increased exposure. Or maybe it's, you know, those are the types of things we're still trying to figure out from another side of the perspective. Is that fair to say, Jim?
It's fair to say, yeah.
All right, other questions?
I had one, one other question, Doug, and that is, recently, we, we had, at one of our town board meetings, we had somebody hack in and post some things that were totally inappropriate. What safeguards guys have in place to, you know, prevent hacking, or, you know, somebody taking over, you know, your, your signage and putting who knows what up there?
So we run on, all of our billboards are on their separate VPNs, which is a virtually private network. They're all encrypted on the backend through Baton Rouge. And if something was to happen, that default is to go to a static blackboard. So if there is any suspicion of anything funky activity going on, it just goes auto-black. We've never had one of the boards hacked through the encryption we have, though.
I, I believe it was like a 16-digit encryption code, yeah, is what it said.
Good, thank you.
Now, you mentioned earlier in regards to two-sided signs, is that considered one sign or two?
Well, that's considered two, but we don't, like Doug said, we don't know what, we don't know, we're not that far down the road yet.
Okay. It's one structure.
One structure, but it'd be one.
If they're back-to-back, like in the eyes of DOT, if it's one structure, that's got two, like, if, as long as it's like a, less than a 20-foot V is considered like one, one entity.
Yeah, because either, either you'll be looking at the back of, of a sign or another sign. So that, I guess that's the, that's, that's the question, was what does the town prefer to have in that space? If you, if the board was to be, you know, particular to the road, one, one, it was one face, and the backside would be exposed, exposed, or you put trees up or something, or you put a sign. That's, that's the kind of question.
Okay, there you go.
Have you presented any design sketches to the town?
Well, we have a concept that we had presented over a year ago. But, but I think, Jim, we had always said that that was just a concept and open to whatever we want it to be when we get to that point in time, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And that was presented to the town board, Oksana. That was.
Okay.
So just, let's touch on that again for a quick second. So we were talking, you showed earlier in the slide, and I still have the slide up here, the monument signs. Let me share my screen again here for a second. I believe, without going into a ton of details, because obviously, we're, we're working on other things also. But I believe we're talking about, generally speaking, a monument sign for the uptown, whatever capacity, whatever that ends up being, and a monopole sign, if I'm using the correct terminology, for the sign in front of Big Lots, that's currently in that plaza right next to Taco Bell. Right? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the monument sign, we can, like I said, those, just those two examples, those are real-life, actual examples. It's not, we've shown you guys renderings, but I kind of want to show you a, a real, real-life, actual, what some of these look like. And I know we did, we can have plans to have either the town of Canandaigua, or we did initially mock up uptown Canandaigua, just as almost like a, a permanent facade on, on the monument sign itself.
Is that first sign, that first example, the same height as that second?
No, they're different. The first, the first, the first sign is, I don't know the exact height of it, but that, that sign is actually bigger than what we're proposing. The second sign is a 12 by 25. That, that's the same size that we're looking at.
Yeah, the, the height from the, what they call the haggle, height above ground level, from the ground to the, the bottom of the board is traditionally about 12 feet. And but we, we can manipulate that to any size we want. It could be five feet. No, we just don't like people climbing on them, so we like to get them a little bit higher. But that is, it could be whatever, we could, it's whatever height we agree on. It could be eight feet, seven, whatever, you know what I mean? Just be whatever.
Traditionally, like Jim was saying, we like to keep it above 12 feet, just to keep any curious passerby, or anybody thinking of, you know, climbing up on there and damaging it, graffitiing it, just any funny business. The 12-foot haggle keeps, keeps all that out of the picture.
And what were the dimensions of the sign itself, the digital part?
It was 12 feet by 25 feet, which is the standard size for secondary arteries.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Doug, who, who is going to work with Lamar on the design aspects?
Well, that'll have to be directed by the town board, Oksana. So we're not, we're not at that point yet. I would, I would anticipate that we would have some sort of a team that would work on that, get some committee input, and ultimately, the town board would need to make the final decision on, on the, the aesthetics and, and everything associated with that.
Would recommend that, that the Gateway Signage Committee be a part of that endeavor as we're looking at signage for, you know, all the access roads to the town. And we certainly would want to have this complement, this sign, complement what the other designs would be, or what the, a design would ultimately be.
Yeah, I would think that would be the case, Joyce. But obviously, we've got to let the town board officially make that decision.
Sure.
We have a timeline as to what happens next, and, and so on, and so on, so on.
That's a great question, Chuck.
That's our question.
I think it's the question.
So I believe we've got a couple of different things going on associated with this. But Lamar, you guys helped me out. I believe the way we left it was our attorneys are kind of working through some things. And I would anticipate that the next step of that would be to really kind of flush out some sort of a draft piece of legislation that will need to put through its paces, Chuck, which I would, I would assume means coming to the ordinance committee. I'm sure the planning board, zoning board, all the different groups probably CIC, and, and obviously review by the town board and final approval by the town board. So, you know, I, I think that you guys, I mean, feel free to jump in here. Um, you know, I, I think that uh, you guys, I mean, feel free to jump in here, but I, I think you'd like to see this continue on its journey. Uh, sooner rather than later. And we've got uh, we've got some other influencers who want this, I think, to continue down its path. They're watching this. Uh, so um, you know, hopefully in the next, I would say thirty to sixty days, we can get some sort of draft together or before, I would hope, so.
Yeah, that we would, we would agree. Um, you know, we're, we're just trying to get that, that draft ready. And then go to the uh, the board meetings and traditionally they're every month, so. You know, it could be a couple, two months there. And then even if everything were to go well, we have to have the sign manufacturing. So the, the end, the end product is uh, you know. Could be eight months away or, we, that depends on how fast things move.
But Jim, from, from the time, let's, let me ask a question a little different way, but it gets at what Chuck was also asking about. Let's make the assumption here for a second, just for purposes, that the town board adopts this legislation. That would allow these pre-existing billboards to be replaced in some capacity. Would you guys then make application pretty quickly to the planning board to go through that approval process? Is that the plan?
We would, we would probably do it immediately, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're, 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 yeah, it's, as soon as possible for us, we're, we got our ducks in a row. The thing is with the timeline to say, like you said, just as we're pretending, say everything went all through the town of Canadagua. Gave us all the approvals that we needed. Following that, we would have to make application to New York State Department of Transportation.
Right.
That's going to take about thirty to sixty days. Once they uh, go do all their uh, traffic studies or do the driving. And then if they give us approval, that, that's the final approval we needed. Then we would order and manufacture the structure. Which you sent usually takes, takes a, it kind of.
Yeah, and it might be a little bit more because it's, it's a monument sign, which would probably be a, uh, a one-off kind of new, new software. Uh, you have to figure that.
So for, four to six months after everything was completed with the town. Is a, a good estimate. That helps.
Then construction, what does that normally take for, if you were to do one?
Uh, I think if you stay a couple of days. Couple of days, yeah, a couple of days. Once everything's all set and we have the drawings, um. It's with a monument sign, might be a little bit longer, but it would be less than. So if it's like the single monopole would probably take about, I'm going to say, three or four days. The monument sign, the thing on what it is would just be longer than that, but three or four days is what things were on the board.
But realistically, we're in April. I think you use the terminology maybe even as long as six months. I mean, you'd probably at the earliest be talking later this year and early next year before you ever even looked at construction, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to say.
I think what would be helpful in this time, this time, from the time standpoint would be. In the consideration of the uh, the ordinance draft, going through the ordinance committee. And the various agencies that have to look at that. If you have a concept plan as to what it's going to, the, the sign's going to look like. So the concept plan can start to be reviewed by the gateway committee and uh, uh, even the planning board. I think the planning board would be interested in looking at a sketch or a concept. And that could get to the point that when the ordinance is considered, we have an idea what it's actually going to look like. Uh, it's the old story, does the, is the design based on the ordinance or is the ordinance based on the design? So uh, I think running them concurrently would be helpful to all parties involved.
Uh, we'd be happy, we'd be happy to meet with the um.
The gateway.
The gateway committee and the, it, we'll, we'll be there tomorrow if you want, just to get things rolling, because we, that, that'd be great.
Yeah, we just, we also need to know kind of whether like uh, are we doing variance? Are we doing permit? Uh, like what the, the route for us to go through this is still kind of unclear.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've kind of talked a little bit and I've had some conversations with the town attorney, but let's, I think the, the plan here is to uh. Get to a point where a local law would be adopted that would allow you to make application for site plan. Directly with the planning board, but we'll, we'll let the league, we'll let the legalese flush all that stuff out, so.
And I, uh, just a quick question. The um, the Big Lots sign that would be uh, repurposed or re, you know, converted, whatever. Would it be the same, the new sign uh, or billboard uh, be the same size as what we currently see at Big Lots? Uh, bigger or smaller?
So currently there's, there's two twelve by twenty-five signs side by side. We would eliminate one of those and it'd be one twenty, twelve by twenty-five sign. So essentially we eliminate half the square footage. It'd be one sign instead too.
Okay. Thanks. All good questions. Any other questions? Good discussion. Thank you everybody for taking the time.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions that they think are, when they're driving around or thinking about, feel free to, to call us. Doug, you can, you know, I can give my numbers if you like, and email us and we can respond to your email. And uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions that uh, that I have answered. And we appreciate everybody's time.
Excellent. Gary, I'll kick it back over to you.
Okay, well, I appreciate the presentation. I'm sure the rest of the people on this site were. Uh, our next meeting for the ordinance committee will be on uh, May third. And uh, Kim has already sent out the information on that and we're going to be talking about the form-based code. Uh, we'll also maybe able to talk about uh, another item briefly during that meeting, depending how much time the uh. Form-based code will take. Uh, I'd like to make the committee aware that the town board, the, the public hearings we had the other night. The Parks and Rec Plan, that uh, you know, was sent back just for some simple um, modifications, if you will, to the Parks Committee. And so we plan on bringing that back to, before the town board uh, for uh, May seventeenth, I think it is, meeting. And uh, then the manufactured home, there was some uh, concern about that. And uh, so uh, brought a table that indefinitely because of some of the uh, modifications that uh, may need to be done with that. Uh, the lighting, uh, you know, that to be, uh, passed the public hearing. And uh, there was some other items, but they didn't mainly pertain, even though they come under ordinance, they uh, pertain to other, you know, parties submitting them. So other than that, uh, I'd like to again, thank everybody for attending today's meeting and uh, see you on uh, May third. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Gary.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Lamar.
Bye, everyone.
Hi, everybody.